Show me there, I know. Um, let's try to get a good evening, everyone. Um, welcome to the uh, common councils can be of the whole for today this, sorry, August, April fifth, um, twenty twenty one. We also streaming on channel ninety six com for Comcast Xfinity customers and channel sixty thirty two for frontier customers. Uh, we are uh, here uh, to discuss uh, two items on our agenda. And uh, my name is Councilman TJ Clark. I serve as the Court of Common Council Majority Leader. Uh, we are joined by Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti, Councilwoman Shirley Surgeon, Councilwoman Will Deleese Bermuda's, Councilman John Gale, Councilman Josh Mitchum, Councilman James Sanchez, Councilman Nick LeBron, and our uh, council president, uh, Mally Rosado. And uh, we also are joined by um, appointees uh, to the Hartford Board of Education, as well as the uh, mayoral uh, appointee of as the name of I Charles Matthews for Director of uh, Development Services uh, Mayor Appointees for the Hartford Board of Ed is uh, Pastor AJ Johnson, uh, Jim Schmilling and Yvette Bello. And we also joined by our uh, Corporation Council Howard Rifkin and our uh, Town and City Clerk Noel McGregor. Uh, moving on, um, we have two added type two items, as I discussed on our agenda. And first item is Mayor Brunner with a company resolution confirming the appointment of I Charles Matthews to the position of Director of Development Services, which was item number one on March eighth, twenty twenty one agenda. And uh, Mr. Matthews, it's such an honor and pleasure uh, for you to be with us, and thank you for your service in advance uh, that you have um, shown to many of us in the uh, city of Hartford for uh, twenty plus years. I don't wanna give the official number. I'll let you uh, give that, but uh, please, uh, the floor is yours.
Well, well, thank you so much, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to talk to the council. I was telling someone earlier, it feels strange to be on this side. It seems like I spend so much time on the other side and position you're at. But uh, my wife was saying to me the other day, um, why would you want this job or any job? And I guess I I said to her while say to you, I don't see this really as a job. I I see this as public service. And if you look at the body of my work and my resume, you will see uh, you know, Chair of the Y MCA, Chair of my Church Trustee Board, uh, the Member of the Hartford Federation, Hartford Foundation Republic given uh, all type of community service. Because I do believe that those of us who have had opportunities need to find a way to give back a little bit. And if you know anything about my background, you will know, uh, I kinda grew up on the streets of Boston, uh, spent some time in the Marine Corps, and during both those experiences, quite honestly, I could have been uh, dead or died three or four or five times. And you have to pose the question when you get a bit old, the why are you still here when other folks who you deem to be better able to serve are gone? And I concluded uh, during the course of my life, that it's really about public service. It's really about if you've been blessed and people have given you second chances and third chances. Because as many of you know, I dropped out of high school when I was seventeen and then had to go through the service and then high school equipment diploma, and then community college, and then Wesley, and then Cornell Law. While I did the work, there was thousands of people who gave me a second chance and a third chance. So I see, if nothing else, I need to be that guy who always tried to make something better for somebody else. That's who I am. Some folks will tell you in this city that I Charles is the second coming. Other folks would tell you, I'm the biggest. I the whole can't say it. So I have a mixed bag, no question about that. But that being said, if you know anything about me, you know, I'm about service. I'm about trying to make a difference in someone else's life, because in many, many ways, I've been blessed. With that, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll take any questions that you may have with me. Uh, whether whether it's about myself personally or about DDS.
Thank you, um, about to call you Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Deputy Mayor, former Deputy Mayor, uh, and the list goes on and on. Uh, can you just, which many of us probably already know, but um, indicate to us, why do you feel that you're qualified for this position? And can you just really, for the public that may not know, uh, the many intricacies of the Department of Bill and the Services? What are the uh, divisions, departments that um, fall under uh, your leadership?
Well, let me 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 start there first. In developmental services, we have license, license and inspection. And obviously, uh, building permits, uh, housing code inspections, they all fall within license and inspection. We have economic development, all the big projects you see going on downtown or going on a neighborhood. Uh, they're covered on the economic development. We have planning and zone enforcement. All the planning can take place in the city. The zoning enforcement, people may have uh, 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 signage that may not be in the right place, or people who may wanna build something in a certain neighborhood that is not consistent with the zoning, uh, that falls on the, on the, under my direction. Housing. We have a whole series of housing programs, uh, and programs that will assist people in homeownership opportunities, assist folks in uh, in rehabbing their homes, uh, falls under my purview. Uh, also, uh, small business initiatives. Uh, we have a lot of small businesses up and down the corridors of our city. Uh, and uh, we have, we have responsibilities for that within uh, DDS. Uh, as to uh, my qualifications, I I would say honestly, I'm not what you call a subject matter expert. Uh, whether whether it comes to economic development, or housing, or planning, uh, or or license and inspection. I think I'm a, I'm a fit, pretty fair manager. I've been blessed to have a number of very, very, very talented people. And I I see my role as being a conductor, trying to work with all these very talented people to make sure that we all work as hard as we can to make a difference in the life of the people who live in the city. Uh, try to improve the quality of their life, uh, try to help young mothers, uh, uh, take care of their kids in many ways and 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 find home ownership opportunities. Try to make sure that if you're a young parent, uh, your, your uh, housing is not only good housing and quality housing, but safe from rodents and all kind of other and uh, things that may occur. So I see myself as that guy that can work with a real good team and try to really make a difference in the lives of people who live in the city and indirectly in the lives of all those people who constantly come into the city uh, twenty-four seven. Hope I answered your question.
Thank you, sir, for that um, explanation, and I open the floor to my council colleagues for any questions they they have for Director Matthews. Councilman LeBron.
So uh, uh, Director Matthews, thank you for your consistent service to our city. I've seen you before, and I've been wanting to ask this question, and I never asked. What does the I stand for in I Charles?
Well, you, I normally tell people, but I tell you, I have to shoot you.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll tell a quick story. The, 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 since you have me here, the I is really Isaiah. And while that may sound pretty easy now, when I was a young man, I had a real serious speech impediment. So I couldn't say Isaiah. So uh, my first day in class, uh, I didn't realize at the time I had a substitute teacher. And all the kids had to stand up in the first grade and say their name. And when I said my first name, I butchered it terribly, and all the kids laughed. So a week later, we had a real teacher come to uh, the class, and she did the same thing, had all the young kids stand up and say their first name. I'm a little smarter now, so I said I Charles. I haven't used Isaiah since then.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman Sanchez.
So it's, it's more of a statement. I just wanna welcome you aboard.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work, uh, that you've been doing. I've, uh, as you know, I I've visited you several times, and I, and I definitely appreciate uh, your um, your goal as to uh, you know, not rejecting folks that go into the uh, Development Services for permits or what have you, but to find a, a way to say yes to our customers and our constituents and our residents. So I I do appreciate uh, you, and I, I think that you will be a great asset to the city of Hartford. And uh, and thank you uh, for allowing us to have you join us.
If I may, Matt, uh, Chair, uh, the point made by the councilman is, is, is a philosophy of management. I tell staff all the time, we're public servants. And our goal is to find a way to get the yes. So when the citizen or business person coming into DDS, we try to find a way to get the yes by showing them exactly what they have to do to help us get the yes, that we're here to serve. So that's, that's what we work and what we push in developmental service. To try to find a way, if possible, to get the yes, so we can serve the residents of the city. Thank you.
Councilman Gale.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, uh, Mr. Matthews, uh, let me join the chorus of people thanking you for, I'm trying to count up the decades, the eighties, the nineties. Uh, I don't really call them the aughts, the teens, and now we're in uh, maybe another roaring twenties here. Uh, so going on to five decades of service to the city of Hartford, a tremendously commendable record and uh, certainly, uh, you know, have appreciated uh, all of your efforts over the years and um, and it is kinda helpful for us here in the, in the city that you've been an acting director for a, a period of time. So everybody's had an opportunity to, to uh, not only see how, uh, you know, how Development Services fares, but you've had a chance to see whether you like the job, and apparently, uh, you know, you're, you like it enough, as you've said, uh, you know, your public service commitment, that you're willing to hang in there with us. Um, and we appreciate that, especially in light of the fact that there's a, a really big challenge coming up now with uh, federal monies coming. Uh, and uh, and I know your department's gonna have a huge role uh, to play in uh, helping the city uh, use that, uh, leverage that money to, to the greatest extent possible to uh, see to what extent we can really get down into the neighborhoods and uh, get into our uh, you know, our communities that have suffered uh, for such a long time economically. Uh, and you know, overlaying COVID on that, just uh, uh, sort of adding insult to injury. So I, I look forward to seeing uh, your, your department, um, uh, as you mentioned, that all the talented people that you have, and and we certainly know most of them, and uh, and it is quite a talented crowd. We look forward to seeing the ideas that, that everybody's gonna come up with, and uh, we'll be here to be willing, uh, willing partners, uh, to work with you. Uh, I'm sure I speak for most of council, all of council, that uh, you know, we, we all wanna, we all, we all want the same thing for our city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rosetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Director Matthews, for your service. Um, can you explain to me um, how you're going to do residency in the city?
Uh, yes, um, I have uh, already selected uh, uh, an apartment in the city. Uh, it's right on Temple and Main Street. Um, as you get older, you discover you don't see as well as you used to. So I'd much rather have an apartment where I can walk right to work. The beauty of the apartment that I'm gonna uh, uh, obtain will allow me to walk right down the hill. And in five or six minutes, I'll be right in my office. So uh, I do plan to uh, obviously register my, my cars in the city. Uh, uh, we plan to have an apartment in the city, and I plan to not to, to not only honor the residency requirement, uh, uh, but do all I can to be a, a, a a key resident of the city of Hartford. I, you may know from my background, I have spent probably most of my life living in the city, whether it's Woodside Circle, or Holcomb Street, or Canterbury Street. It so happens, uh, my wife, who was an interior designer, uh, she found the house that she, she in, in West Hop, that was right in the river, and she wanted to uh, redesign the whole place. And when we, when she finished redesign, and she decided she wanted to stay there. But uh, it was not an issue, and it's still not an issue. We'll be more than happy to be a resident of the city of Hartford.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Councilwoman Surgeon.
Good evening, Mr. Matthews, and thank you so very much. Uh, I, one of the most important two words and most important things I heard when you made your presentation was public service. That is one of the uh, key things I believe a lot of our uh, directors um, doesn't understand of our city. It's not a matter of knowing the subject matter, but when you provide customer service to the residents of Hartford, that goes a huge, long way uh, for the residents and the community to feel like they are respected and their contribution is appreciated. So thank you for those keywords that you use. You've spent a couple of months being um, interim director. If one of the, what would be your, one of your main priorities now that um, you are uh, selected as the permanent director that you would improve on um, in Development Services?
Well, I, I, I think, as I think about, I have two main goals I like to uh, focus on. One is uh, fully develop the Southern Block. You know, the Southern Block, we have Arrowhead Cafe. I like to make sure we have the opportunity to develop that uh, from the corner of Pleasant and Main all the way down to Green Street on, on Albany Avenue and from Pleasant and Main all the way down to Sim Street on Main Street. I think that area has a gateway to the city. When you come down Albany Avenue, or you come down Main Street, it's something we certainly uh, need to really focus on and make happen. The other thing that I, I'm just convinced of, uh, in some respects, it seemed to me that downtown Hartford uh, will take care of itself. There are so many folks downtown, uh, whether CIDA, or banks, or other investors from New York and all over the place who wanna invest money in downtown. So we're gonna certainly work with everything downtown and make downtown a great place to live, work, and play. But I think what we have to do in developmental service is put as much time, as much energy, as much resources as we can in the neighborhoods and in the business corridors. I'm talking about uh, North, North Main Street. I'm talking about uh, Maple. I'm talking about Westfield. I'm talking about Washington Street. We have to really put a lot of time and energy to make our neighborhoods and our business corridors uh, have real vitality and have real opportunities. I think uh, over the course of the next eighteen months, that should be our focus. And as we get some of these new monies coming in from the federal government, uh, we are see how we can put a lot of those dollars to really make a sustainable, a sustainable impact in our neighborhoods, not just put money as something, and that's something may go away in a month or two months, but something that maybe a year from now, or five years from now, you as a councilperson or any citizen can look at and say, boy, that's great, and so great, I now wanna invest my own dollars to make a difference on that street, or that block, or that neighborhood. I think those are the two things I really wanna focus on over the course of the next twelve to eighteen months.
Great, thank you. I think I certainly do agree with you that we have some great corridors coming into the city, both uh, north and south. When I look at the number of, um, looked at the budget last year, and look, um, you know, the, your budget, I believe, was about four million.
Yes.
Um, you know, I know over the last, you know, couple of decades, you know, the city has been strapped uh, with revenues, and we have our issues and dispensing funds. Um, do you believe your department have enough employees? Um, one of the quest, one of the statements you made was making sure housing are uh, very good, decent housing for the residents of the city, no rats, no, all that sort of stuff. So do you believe you have enough? Um, and that probably is gonna be a budget question in a cup, in a month or so. But since you're here now, and with your six months' experience, what would you look at your budget? Uh, you know, and say, well, you know, what do I think? Do I have enough employees to get that eighteen months' accomplishment in your two goals?
Well, the, the uh, I guess, my first reaction is I've been here long enough to know that every department head will tell you they need more. Uh, so no question about that. I, I, I think, given the city's fiscal condition, uh, it is probably fair to say, we could u- use uh, a few more housing inspectors. There's no, you should know this, right now, we have five housing code inspectors. And in, in, in the new budget, we'll be getting a diff, an additional two uh, uh, inspectors to deal with the uh, residential license program. So that will give us roughly a total of seven uh, inspectors. I think it's fair to say, if, if things were perfect and we had the resources we needed, that I probably could use another one or two uh, building inspectors, another one or two housing codes i- in inspectors. Uh, you should know too, that last year, we proposed to bring in and fees roughly five point five million dollars. This year, by June thirtieth, we think we will probably make close to seven million. So having said that, to the degree we bring on more inspectors, uh, we do have the, the ability to earn uh, their keep, so to speak. So I do think if, if I had to strategically say, where do I need to put a few people? They would be housing code inspectors or building inspectors, and also in economic development. Uh, if I talk to my economic development people, they will tell you, given all that's taking place in the city and the neighborhoods, they could use another uh, uh, staff person, economic development, and planning could use another staff person. But again, you have to look at the fiscal condition of the city and strategically strategically say to yourself, how many folks can you reasonably bring on board, given the budget crisis we find ourselves?
Great. Um, I just wanna thank you again, uh, Mr. Matthews, for your continued uh, support for the city of Hartford. Um, you know, I, I would say that we go way back from a very long time. I'm like John Gale, I'm not quite not sure what decade this is, or how long you've been involved for several decades. But one of the things I've always known about you is that when you make a decision, you make a decision by putting the residents in Hartford first. So I wanna thank you very much for volunteering. I think it's a volunteering for you to take this undertaking, because it's a, it's a lot of work. Um, you know, going forward, especially as um, Councilman Gale says, with the small amount of uh, money that we're gonna be getting in the next um, three years for the city is making a lasting difference in our city, that a decades from now, we can go back and say, yes, you know, we did something good for a city. So thank you very much for your service, and um, I look forward to working with you over the next um, several years.
Thank you.
Your council president.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, Mr. Matthews.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. I really don't have any questions. I, I, I just have a comment. I just wanna thank you for your leadership. Um, it's been a pleasure so far working with you, and look forward to working with you over the next uh, years. Um, so welcome aboard, and thank you for never leaving Hartford.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Council colleagues, Councilman Sanchez.
I'd like to make a motion to send the appointment of uh, I Charles Matthews as the Director of DDS um, to council favorably.
I send a motion.
The item had, motion has been made by Councilman Sanchez. Uh, before I actually uh, finish this, I just have a procedural question. Uh, Attorney Rifkin, given the fact that this is committee of the whole, is a motion actually needed for this?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, I think a motion is uh, appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, okay, uh, so going back to what I was saying, uh, motion has been made by Councilman Sanchez uh, to send this item of I Charles Matthews uh, as the Director of Development Services to of the next council favorably, and has been, next council meeting favorably, has been seconded by uh, Council President Rosado. Are there any uh, questions? Any questions, any questions? Uh, seeing none, all in favor on sending this item favorably back to the next municipal meeting by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposals, in abstentions, uh, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Councilman.
For your service, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
I'm always there for you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on. An item number three on our agenda is Mayor Brunner with a company resolution confirming the appointments of Ms. Yvette Bello, uh, Mr. Jim Schmilling, and Pastor AJ Johnson to the Hartford Board of Education, which is item number five on uh, the council's March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one agenda. And for the sake of time, I know that Mr. Schmilling uh, is under severe time uh, constraints. Uh, so I will open the floor to him, uh, if he is still uh, here. I see his screen up. All right, there you go. Okay, Mr. Schmilling, understanding you are under a severe time uh, constraints, please uh, go ahead and introduce yourself and about uh, who you are and uh, what you're looking forward to do for the, as an appointee of the Hartford Board of Education.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the opportunity to address you. Um, I apologize, I'm in the airport on my way back to Hartford. I'm in Nashville, um, visiting my new granddaughter. And so the only flight, only direct flight back is at uh, eight, eight thirty PM Eastern Time. So we're about to board. Um, I am the President and CEO at Connecticut Children's. I have been at Walth for six years. Uh, this is my forty-first year working in children's hospitals. I devoted my, my career uh, to children's health. Uh, my undergraduate degree is in health education, so I started out as a teacher and felt that I can make a bigger impact on children's health uh, through the platform of a children's hospital. So that's, that's where I directed my career. I've, uh, from day one, when I moved to Hartford, I had rented an apartment. I'm, I live downtown on Trumbull Street. I enjoy being downtown and being a resident, and uh, have enjoyed being a part of the community. Uh, most recently, I uh, worked, partnered with United Way to ensure that every child born in Hartford from the age of zero to five receives a book every month, because we know that literacy and brain development, particularly the first three years of life, are so important in preparing school to be, uh, children to be school-ready. Uh, there are longitudinal studies in other communities where kids who get books at an early age, much better in school. Uh, graduation rates are higher, attendance is better, et cetera. So I've made a commitment to, for the children of Hartford. I was able to get Hartford Hospital and St. Francis to uh, join us and the United Way, and we've just started this program, and now have five hundred children receiving free books every month. So I'm looking forward to making a contribution uh, by being a member of this board towards children's education and health.
Thank you, Mr. Schmilling. Uh, do you, to me, of my colleagues, have any questions for this system?
Just wanna say thank you. Um, this is Councilwoman Bermuda's. I recently received an email from the Hartford Public School System in reference to this, this book uh, program, and I didn't realize that was through your effort, so I just wanted to personally say thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bermuda. Is anybody else? Councilwoman Surgeon.
I just wanna thank um, Mr. Schmilling. Uh, one of the great things about um, the Children's Hospital, it's been, it's a very, very welcoming, homey uh, environment. You think, you know, you go there to get well as a sick person, but um, you've made that hospital and the staff a wonder for children coming into that hospital. And if you can do that for a sick for children coming into that hospital. And if you can do that for a sick child, imagine what you can do. You know, with our Hartford Public School System and our kids, to make them feel so welcoming and so loved. And, um, I just want to thank you personally, um, as a grandmother who lost a son, a grandson in your hospital, and I just can't believe how wonderful you and your staff have done to the Hartford residents. So thank you, and I look forward and welcome you to work with you at the Board of Education.
Thank you so much. I have a great privilege of working with wonderful people at the hospital who are passionate about children, children's health.
Through you, Chair, I just want to piggyback on the sentiments of my colleagues. Um, thank you for being so passionate at what you do and, um, safe travels tonight and welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm gonna walk and talk at the same time, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Good boarding.
Councilman Gale?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Schmerling, uh. Uh, I want to just mention two things that, that are passionate, uh, passions for me. Um, and, and this will apply to all the board candidates that we're, uh, interviewing tonight. Uh, I'm a product of the Hartford School Systems, uh, certainly many of the, many of my colleagues are uh, as well. I don't know your particular background, but, uh, I, I love the fact that you, you know, moved downtown when you took the job and one of the, uh, one of the things that's always been key for me is teaching our kids about their city, about Hartford. Um, so that each kid going into school here in Hartford learns to love their city. Uh, and so I'm, I'm hoping that, um, you know, you will keep some of that in mind. Uh, especially the, to the extent that you can impact the curriculum. Uh, we know there's been a tremendous effort on math and reading, but, uh, there's no reason why math and reading can't be intertwined with uh, reading that teaches you something about your city and math that, that helps you learn, uh, more about, um, uh, uh, your city. And, uh, so I'm, I'm encouraging, um, you uh, to look at those things and I'd be happy to, to share more thoughts with you, uh, offline at any time. The second thing that I'm, uh, passionate about with respect to the, to the school system, and mind you, I have grandchildren that are in the school system right now. Um, uh, is, um, what I've, what I've now started to call same, S A M E, which, uh, stands for sports, arts, music, and extracurricular. The Hartford School System, uh, has suffered, uh, big time from a lack of all of those various programs. Our sports programs, uh, have been decimated, our arts and music have been decimated, uh, as well as extracurricular activities. I, uh, do some, um, a lot of work with Hartford Public High School, my alma mater. And it's, it's just depressing the lack of clubs and, uh, and after-school activities that a place like Hartford Public has, when you compare it with every high school i- i- in the greater Hartford area. So I'm hoping that you bring that, that sensibility to the board and that you work with the administration and you encourage, uh, everyone to figure out a way, how do we get these programs back? How do we, uh, build up so that our kids can enjoy the same benefits? And we know uh, from a multitude of studies that, you know, reading and math alone just isn't, it isn't enough. Uh, getting that well-rounded, um, uh, education, uh, getting exposed to these other things helps immeasurably in life. So, uh, just giving you my, my two, two bits of propaganda, thanks very much, uh, look forward to working with you.
Thank you, and I'd love to, to, uh, get with you at some point and, and learn more about that and how I can contribute.
Thank you, um, uh, Councilman Gale for that. Uh, I just have a quick question. Let's see you, Councilwoman Rosetti. Because I know that you're getting ready to board soon. My question for you is, uh, how do you rank the importance of neighborhood schools versus, uh, magnet schools?
I have four children, all were educated in public schools in Memphis, Tennessee, so I'm a strong advocate of public education.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Rosetti?
Uh, Mr. Schmeling, I know you have to board, but this is also for Ms. Bello and uh, Pastor Johnson. First of all, I, I, you know, I thank anybody who wants to be on board of it. I think it's probably one of the hardest jobs, and I also question your sanity, but that's okay. Daughter of a teacher and a product of the Hartford Public Schools and the chair of, you know, the Parks Committee in the city, I'd like to see a way that we can utilize, um, school, uh, you know, yards and at times when they're underutilized and incorporate them better with our park system in the city. They seem to be, uh, Councilman LeBron and I speak on this frequently, and I think there is a way that we have to address this. We've, we've learned anything recently that open space is more important than ever, so I, I plead with you to figure out how we can continue to not only have the discussion, but make this happen. So, thank you very much.
Right. Any other questions before Mr. Sch- uh, Schmeling boards? My council colleagues? Seeing none? Thank you very much, Mr. Schmeling. Uh, thank you very much for your time and safe travels to you.
Thank you so much. Look forward to working with you.
Likewise. All right, moving on, uh, we have, uh, next, uh, Ms. Yvette Bello.
Hello, everybody. Thank you again for the time tonight. Um, and, uh, I hope, Jim, you get home safely. Um, uh, I just wanted to kind of, uh, add a little bit more depth to my bio that I'm sure you all read. Um, that's really me as an adult, but I was hoping to give a little bit of insight of how I was when I was growing up and kind of hopefully answering the question of why, why I think, um, I'm really excited about this opportunity, actually. Um, so, uh, wanted to share a little bit about, um, where I came from. Uh, my story really begins with my parents. Um, they came here to Hartford in, uh, in the seventies from Mexico. And, um, my parents were, uh, my father came first and, um, settled here and then, uh, called for my mom and she came. Um, so my, my story begins with an immigrant beginning. Uh, we are the first generation here, uh, from my family. Um, and I think that has a lot to do with how we were brought up and, and the, the extreme focus on education. My parents, um, uh, had, were educated when they came here and, um, just because of where they came from. Um, they couldn't bring those credentials over, and so they literally had to start all over. Um, they, uh, worked really hard and we saw that. So we, we were kind of, um, you know, sort of, uh, the first seats of, of understanding, uh, hard work ethic. Um, and the power of what school can do. Uh, my mom was gra- you know, while I was going to school, my mom was actually rebuilding her curric- uh, her, um, curriculum vitae here. Uh, had to start all over again. Um, and so a lot of times we were all doing schoolwork. Um, I did attend, I'm going to do some shout-out on some schools, but I attended Burn School, um, for kindergarten and Saint Anne's from one to three. Uh, I did take two school buses to get there and back. Uh, and we survived somehow when we were kids. Um, uh, my, my father did put us, um, he actually, uh, when I, when, when Saint Anne's closed down, um, he, uh, negotiated that we go to Naylor School. Um, and, um, it was out of our district, but, uh, that's kind of my first taste of, of having to do something, um, having to really kind of fight for an education, fight for a shot, and that was really kind of how it felt. Um, so that was kind of memorable for me as a kid, believe it or not, at fourth grade. Um, but it was kind of the first time I actually felt like I, I was at home, frankly. Um, I went to school with kids from all over our city, which kind of made me feel not alone, right? Um, it's easy to feel alone when you're in fourth grade. Um, and, um, kind of fast forward, I graduated from Naylor. Um, and that was around the nineties, just so if anybody's dating me, um, it's, you know, it got really, really hairy in the nineties and, um, my dad shipped me out to, um, uh, a school in New Britain, a Catholic school in New Britain, um, where I found out another le- lesson. Um, that being from Hartford wore a stigma. Um, and that stigma predetermined, if you will, how people treated me. Um, I learned about how narrow-minded good people could be. Um, and, and they were administrators and they were teachers that held this belief and, um, but it made me stronger. I, uh, graduated from that high school valedictorian. Um, I s- and while they was, it was celebrated before me and celebrated after me, that privilege and that celebration was not given to me. Um, so that also taught me how different I am. Um, I also didn't benefit from a good guidance, uh, counselor, uh, that was kind of withheld for me. And, um, and I ended up, uh, having to make the choice after a semester in college, trying to pay for it myself, uh, to join the military if I wanted to go to school, and that really felt like that was the choice. Um, and despite my parents not wanting that for me. Um, but that kind of, um, brings me to the bio that you read. Um, but it also, I, I think for me, telling my story underlines like how much, um, education meant a lot. It meant having to be uncomfortable a lot of times. Um, being out of community most of my life. Um, and that's something that I, I actually feel, uh, is driving me to say yes to this position. Um, and I hope it serves me while I'm in this position, because I do believe fundamentally that our kids um, deserve to be in their hometown, deserve to have, um, five-star education experience. Uh, that fulfills them on a personal level, on a social level, and on, on an academic level. Uh, I don't want any talent in my city to be left on the table. I fundamentally believe that. Um, that our kids are amazing, and we need to be even more amazing so that they have a chance. Um, and that's, that's how I, I see it. Um, I look forward to looking at the, you know, to, to Marilyn's point, Councilwoman Rosetti, excuse me. Um, I, I, I really, I don't know what it means the, you know, in terms of being challenged, and I don't understand the, the structure of the culture yet. Um, but I, I, I look forward to that, and I look forward to finding balance on, on how to be supportive to our teachers. How to be, um, sort of, um, you know, not sort of, but, uh, within the constraints of our budget, but to be creative within it, and also, uh, um, just, you know, not stop at good. I want great. Um, so I'm going to stop there, um, because I'm really uncomfortable talking about myself, and I'll just answer questions.
Um, thank you for that, and thank you for sharing your story. Uh, my question for you is the same as, uh, I posed to Mr. Schmeling. What, how do you, uh, rank, uh, between the importance of neighborhood schools versus, uh, magnet schools?
I want magnets, I want ne- neighborhood schools to, to, to be as excellent and as resourced and as supported as magnet schools have been, and I, and I don't want it to be a gamble. I, I'd rather every school to be, to be that amazing. And to offer the same opportunities.
Thank you for that question. Um, open the floor to my colleagues. No questions? Seeing none?
Oh, question.
All right.
Like, really? Okay.
I know, I know. You're about to get off easy.
I thought, I was like, no, thank you. You know, apply elsewhere. Okay.
First, thank, thank you so much for, for all the work that you've done in Hartford, um, throughout the decades. It's very appreciative. We all, the entire community appreciates it.
Thank you.
Um, so the question is, I guess, following Councilwoman Rosetti, there's been moments where there have been a bit of, you know, so it's always a, a a give and take and a different viewpoints and, and whatnot. But especially during the pandemic, um, where the parents want something, um, and have expressed something, a specific desire, and then the administration might express something else. And so it was one, and it's a tricky question, right? Because these are all hypotheticals. But how do you plan to navigate, um, between all of those uh, desires and wants, and, and obviously, everybody's want, wants the same thing, the greater good for the students, so.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's hard to think about hypotheticals, but I can see that situation sort of playing over and over again. Um, I, I, I usually think of myself as bridge-building. Um, and sharing perspective, I think, is really important, so, and, and to have that dialogue directly. So if there is a way to, um, and, and I think, I believe that there are ways to have parents directly influence administration. Uh, I'm all for that. And there's also a way for administration to, to share constraints, uh, whatever those might be with parents. Um, and, and bring people to see each other's perspective. So I, I hope to navigate that and build bridges where I can. Um, and, um, yeah, I think, I think that's how I would sort of, if in, in hypothetical without knowing which is what we're talking about for in, in concrete terms. Um, and then engage others, I think, um, so that is not such a, um, a bifurcated, if you will, um, view of the issue, um, that perhaps there's others that can, we, we can learn from, uh, you know, in both sides, if you will, that might shift our perspectives as well. I, I'm, I'm, I'm for more information than, than less and, and more inclusive than, than not.
Thank you. And again, thank you for, for your commitment to the community and to the kids. It's really, really appreciated.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Surgeon?
Okay, hi again. Thank you for, um, your commitment to wanting to do this. Councilwoman Rosetti was exactly right. You know, it is a daunting task you're undertaking. So when we offer our sincere gratitude, we truly mean that. Because we know we love our kids in the city. One of the things you mentioned, um, from your response to Councilman, um, it was like, yep, uh, to Councilman Clark, when he asked you between neighborhood schools. And it just put me in the, the conversation I had this morning with a Hartford parent who felt, um, they're immigrants also, and they felt it was ridiculous that they had to actually, uh, compete to go to a, uh, you know, to not, they believe that all neighborhood schools should be so great that nobody else wants to leave and go out to another school. They just felt that it was, you know, what am I paying here? I bought my house here, I invest in being a, um, a resident. And i- it's so funny that when you said neighborhood schools is really must be more important than the charter schools. Um, and so I want to thank you for that belief, because that was the same sentiment. An immigrant felt the same way that they don't need to go to another town or go to a charter school. You know, har- all of Hartford Neighborhood School should be so important that you don't want to do this. Um, there is also a large West Indian community, uh, you know, that's in the school system. And so I think with your, your experience, uh, growing up and going off to a school outside the city, you can understand how those feelings are when you come to a new home. Yeah, ma- to make this country your new home. So I would love you to carry that knowledge uh, when you grew up in Hartford, and how it will help you, uh, work with all the other residents, um, that are immigrants here. So again, thank you so very much, um, for doing so.
Thank you.
Councilman LeBron?
Yes, um, thank you again for your, uh, commitment, Ms. Bello, uh, to the students and the scholars in Hartford. Uh, my question is, have you had a, uh, I, have you had a conversation about the subcommittee that you're going to be involved in, or, or what is your interest in terms of a subcommittee from, uh, the Board of Education?
I have not yet had a, a conversation about the subcommittees. Um, I'd love to hear, if, if you don't mind, what they're, what they are. Um, and I can give you my, my gut reaction to them, um, if you like that. Um, but I, I, I don't know of a, a subcommittee yet.
Okay, well, no, I, it, we don't have to answer that, but I mean, it's definitely something where um, you take a look at, and a lot of the nuts and bolts of the details happen there. Um, and so, uh, definitely just engage in that conversation and definitely join something that, you know, you will be, um, highly interested in. That, that, that would be my only recommendation.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilman.
Councilman Gale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh good evening, Ms. Bello. Uh, I I trust you heard my comments to Mr. Schmerling about. Um, uh, the Hartford curriculum. Um, and uh in giving our students the same uh benefits that students have in other. Uh, communities. So I I'm gonna see if I can work that into a mantra now that, you know, everybody talks about same. Sports, arts, music, and extracurricular. Uh, but I want to add a third thing to that. Um, uh, which is to pick up on the chef uh case. Um, and um, and and again, I'm, you know, I'm giving you my points of view, so you're you're welcome to flush them down the toilet. Uh, but uh, you know, somebody is lifelong here and uh, as I've mentioned earlier, I'm a product of the schools. My kids are products of the schools. I've got grandkids in the schools. Uh, here in Hartford, my sister's teacher in the schools in Hartford. My wife works for the schools in Hartford. Um. My own, my own uh sense of the chef case and something that I think needs continuous work. Uh, for us here in Hartford is that the the way in which the state of Connecticut chose to. Uh, satisfy the Supreme Court decision. Um, has helped Hartford retain certain parents. That otherwise might have moved out of town. Uh, because it gave them options that they felt were uh. Sometimes better than that neighborhood school and and mind you, I'm a big neighborhood school guy, but. Uh, but I have to recognize that some of our neighborhood schools just aren't performing and. What chef did was create the ability for you to, you know, lottery into various schools and that helped retain people. What chef didn't do? Is it didn't help Hartford attract a single person. Uh, there's, you know, very few people that uh who have school-aged children will look to buy a house in a neighborhood in Hartford. Uh, because of of what chef has now done. Uh, so I just throw that out there as as something that all board members uh from my perspective need to be mindful of. We need to constantly work on.
Sure, uh, I I definitely second that uh councilman and uh as a Realtor. Um, I know that that's the number one question I get from my my buyers as they seek um their homes. Um, is is education. So I'm I'm acutely aware um that we have to answer that here in Hartford. Um, and and my hope is that with with effort and and um. And uh and as I joined the team, um, I hope that we can, we can answer that with with um. Uh, in a positive, in in a more, in a more stronger footing, if you will.
Yeah, and one of the, and you know, this is a Realtor. I hear it all the time as a lawyer who uh ends up representing people in real estate transactions. When you come to Hartford, and I'm I'm assuming all my colleagues know this, if. Uh, if you move in in the middle of the year, you your kids, y- you don't have a choice as to what school your kid goes to until you go through a cycle and get into the lottery. And people aren't willing to wait a year and a half uh often, and that that does hurt us.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Bello? Any other? Well, Ms. Bello, thank you again for your willingness and your service so far uh to be a member of the Hartford Board of Education. I believe if you are appointed um confirmed by the council, you will be in good hands. Um, on the board vice current members. And so uh, thank you again. And if there are uh no other questions, we are moving on to Pastor AJ Johnson.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor AJ, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, thank you so much, um, Majority Leader Clark. Uh, thank you so much to all the council members that are on tonight. You all have. Uh, one of the most interesting jobs in the city. And I'm sure you're sitting behind a Zoom uh in a Zoom meeting very often, so I will try to keep this short. Uh, but, you know, I I'm just honored to be here uh and to have the opportunity to. Uh, work for our children uh in the city of Hartford. Um, I'm sure, I'm, it feels like I'm on here with folks who are, who know me. I've worked with each of you in various different capacities. Uh, I'm the senior pastor of Urban Hope Refuge Church on the corner of Westland. Uh, in Barber Street, a church that my father founded. Um, many years ago, uh, and I'm a community organizer for the Center for Leadership and Justice. Which uh being a community organizer and being in this role is going to be very interesting because I get an opportunity. To see both sides. I get an opportunity to uh work in the community with families and parents. But now I get an opportunity to help bring that uh that energy. Uh, and bring that information and that knowledge to the Hartford Board of Education. Uh, I'm, I'm here because uh I have a three-year-old uh named Ashton William Johnson. And I have a one-year-old named Addison King Johnson, which will uh quickly be going into. Uh, Hartford Public Schools. I have no ambition of taking my children out of or, you know, anywhere else. I think that we can build confidence uh in our school system here. Um, you know, I'm a product of uh suburban schools. Uh, my parents sent me to Weathersfield and to Rocky Hill. Public schools during a time where they weren't prepared to educate young black men. So, you know, conversations about my. Um, about my future became more about my behavior and my inability not to. Not to uh do the work and the requirements of those particular schools. But the bottom line was they just weren't prepared to. Educate a a young black boy um at that moment. So. You know, I am here because I want to see an education system uh that is ready for my children. Uh, to be in, but also the many children that attend my church. Um, who go to the to the local community schools, I I would like to be there uh for them uh as well. Uh, and so, you know, on on the board, if there are some cool things that I would like to do. Um, I would like to be on the finance and audit committee because I think. Uh, having someone who knows how to speak to the complicated things to parents. Is something that is uh very important because I've sat. In rooms as a community organizer with board members around stuff that was hard to understand, that parents just don't. Uh, understand. They 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 see one thing, but they don't necessarily understand the whole picture. So. Uh, my job as an organizer is to develop that picture, but now I get a deeper understanding on how to explain those things. So the finance and audit committee is one place. Um, I would probably like like to work and join and be a part of if there is a close second. And third, uh, it would be family and community engagement, uh, because I think that is crucial. To, as I stated before, crucial how we uh engage with our parents. Uh, uh, we don't have parents, like thi- this is not Rocky Hill. This is not Weathersfield. This is not Avon. That this is a completely different animal. And so I appreciate the different diversity. That uh the Hartford Board of Education has by bringing uh Ms. uh Yvette and bringing uh uh Mr. Schmerling. On, I I and and bringing myself, I think that's a a strong um presentation of diversity. But I also feel that we uh have, you know, a lot more of. Relationship building to do uh on the board, but also uh with the superintendent herself. So I'm going to be quiet there and just take questions.
Thank you, Pastor, uh, for uh your willingness and for your service so far. Uh, to the residents in the of the city of Hartford, uh, for the time and dedication that you have uh. Uh, displayed and uh looking forward to uh working uh with you and the rest of your colleagues. Uh, if you are uh appointed uh to uh the Board of Ed confirmed by the council. Uh, my question for you is the same as the uh your other two uh colleagues that I had uh asked. What is uh in your viewpoint, um, where where do you rank neighborhood schools? Uh, versus as a priority versus uh uh magnet schools?
Yeah, no doubt. If anybody on this phone call doesn't know my answer to that question, I would challenge you to get the know me very soon. I believe community schools in this city is important. Um, but by all means, I, you know, Martin Luther King School was a school that. Uh, I went into when parents uh wanted to keep that school open. And I have to say that was probably one of the most rewarding. Um. You know, campaigns that I have worked on to save Martin Luther King School because. A lot of the parents had ecosystems that we don't understand built in at their school. You know, changing one thing at a community school. Is changing like a whole e- ecosystem that we don't, as professional people, we don't see. Children had the opportunity to walk to school. Children had the opportunity to have siblings from. Other apartment complexes, walk children, like it was an ecosystem. That we never, like, if if you weren't in it, you would not understand it. So. Uh, community schools are so important because it allow allows the children that actually live. In our community to have a place where they can, where they can go uh and and be. They don't have to be busted out. I have a young lady in my church. Who uh always comes up to me and says, Pastor AJ, I'm tired. Well, like, eleven years old, what you what you tired about, man? Well, I have to get up four thirty every morning to catch the bus to go to um. To go to Glastonbury. I'm I'm bust out every morning and my day starts at four thirty. And if something happens, my mom can't necessarily uh come and get me because she's working and I'm just kind of stuck up there. Uh, with people that I necessarily don't like. So uh, I I'm tired. So she's tired for a lot of reasons, but. Um, you know, we have to change the narrative that education is better in other places um for our children. I don't like that narrative. Um, but that's a narrative that we, that, you know, that we have. Um. And I hope that we can, we can change it, that our education system at Martin Luther King School. At uh at at Weaver High School, all all of our schools. Uh, should have a pristine reputation and confidence for parents uh for parents to choose.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from my colleagues?
Uh, the same question that I had uh before, which is. There are moments where the parents want something and the administrators want something else. So how would you make the most of that? Situation?
Yeah, so I mean, I think that as uh council members, I think that you all deal with the same tension. I've sat in many. Pub uh public hearing, you know, uh, many things at council and I'm just scratching my head. I wonder how Nick is gonna handle that because that. You know, that's a tough one, but I think. You know, as I stated before, I think communication is absolutely key. Communication. Is absolutely key and listening is absolutely key. Um, I think that there are ways, again, I've seen situations like this play out. Um, you know, again, with the simple clothing of a school is something that we necessarily didn't want to do. But if we're gonna trust in our superintendent. Uh, in the guidance uh that she has to do certain things, we have to trust her on that. And I remember having conversations. Bringing the superintendent into the room and parents just. You know, we're steps away from grabbing this lady, right? Uh, and, you know, I had to be, you know, listen, this this, the superintendent has a job to do. Um, and her staff is available to walk through uh exactly what it is. If there's stuff that. Parent that that's non-negotiable for you, we can talk about that and we can push back, you know, we can push back at that. Uh, but, you know, there has to be a negotiation at some point. And so hopefully we can. Uh, have clear communication with parents, like up our communication with parents. Uh, so they know exactly what it is that's happening. Um, you know, one good tool that, you know. That I've seen work, obviously, is the robo calls that the Hartford Public Schools does to parents. I think that helps in communication in a lot of ways because I've been in rooms with parents where they have to pick up this number. That's calling because they know it's the school calling about something, but. We just, you know, have to have clear communication uh and work with the parents to. Uh, understand exactly what it is. Parents don't understand budgets. As much as we try and hold the budget sessions, parents parents don't have. Uh, time to do that. Um, I know that because I've been in people's homes. Uh, during the No More Sunlow campaign and, you know, parents have, it's like ships moving in the night, man, you know. Kids come home, parents are just getting home and that communication is there. So. To do as much as we can to um define that communication and let parents uh be truly engaged in the process, that's what I'm all about.
Council President.
Thank you through you, Chair. Um, so to Ms. Yvette Bello's. Um, thank you for volunteering your time. Um, it's been a pleasure listening to you. Um, and I welcome after um the confirmation process. Um, to Pastor AJ Johnson, um, I'm glad that. You've done your homework and you know exactly what subcommittees you want to be part of, Plan A, Plan B. Um, but I have to disagree a little bit of when you make the statement of diversity. So. You know, when we look at equity and we look at diversity and we look at this board. Where sixty-five percent of the Hartford children that attend school, public schools. Are are sixty-five percent and there's only one Hispanic appointed to this board. So when we look at equity and we look at diversity, I I I just. I I don't see that. So, um, hopefully we will have. Um, more residents that do want to become um part of not only. This uh, the Board of Education, um, but other boards. So I am strongly recommending to my colleagues that. Um, we do some sort of, you know, marketing outreach, social media, so that we can. Start getting members of our community involved um that look like us and represent our community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bermudas.
Yeah, so I just, I guess that I opened up to a question. Um, my understanding was that the appointments were. As they always are, are made by the mayor.
So, um. Since we brought that brought up the subject, these are the mayoral appointees. And so as we understand that these are. Uh, these are, these appointments are his prerogative and it's up to the council whether we want to confirm his. Uh, appointees or not confirm his appointees. Now, keep in mind that uh per our charter. There are five people who are appointed by him by the mayor, confirmed by the council. Four people who are elected by uh the electorate in the city of Hartford. Now, there is an elected position that is vac- that has been vacated. Um, which was occupied by a he- he- an Hispanic gentleman. And today, today, that uh seat has not been filled yet. So that's a conversation. Uh, that needs to be had to see how that elected position, not appointed, but that elected position does get filled.
Absolutely. And through you, Chair, yes, um, the statements made by Councilwoman Berm- Bermudas and you. Are absolutely cor- correct, but the mayor is constantly uh reaching out to members of the community. I know that he. Reaches out to members of city council for any recommendations that we might have. Our nominations um to forward to him um for appointments. So I just want to be very clear of that. That the mayor is always willing and able um to take any referrals or any recommendations either made by city council members or residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I I did want to say thank you to Pastor Johnson for his tireless efforts in the city in terms of helping so many. For so long in our community. I did want to say thank you as well.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman.
I just want to say that there and uh I'm gonna call on Councilwoman Surgeon. Um, keep in mind too, uh, that these are, I forget how many times now, this is the. This may be the third round of appointments. Uh, so when the mayor did first start up, there were multiple. Uh, appointments that he made that were of uh Hispanic or Latino descent. Uh, and those individuals uh unfortunately did step away for personal reasons. So we just have to keep that in mind as we talk about this in full context. Uh, Councilwoman Surgeon.
Hi, I'm through you, Mr. Chair. Just want to thank um Pastor Johnson again. Um, looking forward to seeing him with the kids on the dais when he takes. He has worked so tirelessly um for the entire time I've known him on behalf of the residents of the city. So this step in this new career volunteerism path i- is a welcoming. Uh, I hope he will continue with that certain passion he has for working with the residents of the city. Uh, I totally um would like uh Pastor Johnson and Ms. Bello. To remember again how you guys stated that the neighborhood schools are important. And charter uh schools, you know, as good as they are, but I really believe that, you know. Um, Ms. that Ms. Bello is a Realtor. Uh, Pastor Johnson, you do community activist work. That when you strengthen your neighborhood school, it's a huge selling point. To anyone outside the city. So if you were given an opportunity. You know, um, as you said, policies, because that's what we do at the council. We set policy for the administration of the city. You set policies for the Board of Education. So in setting those policies, when the opportunity comes, I would really appreciate any um. Ideas you can put on the table to keep strengthening our neighborhood school. So your kids. Won't have to go to uh, you know, Rocky Hill or Weathersfield or New Britain, you know, and. and look down at Hartford schools. So thank you again, and I'm looking forward at when you, uh, take your seat at the Board of Education. I'm definitely going to tune in.
Appreciate it. And, and I must say that, um, you know, the Chair of the Policy Commu- uh, Committee, um, Ayesha Clark has done, uh, an outstanding job, uh, there as well. So I'm just looking to just be there and, and be a great team player uh, to the good work that's already being done.
Thank you, sir.
Council, excuse me, Councilman LeBron.
Pastor A.J. Johnson, uh, it's good to see you. Um, I don't know how you do it, like, y- y- you wear so many hats. I remember one time many, many years ago, you said you gotta have seven hustles. In, in order to be successful, and I, and I take that to heart. I mean, your commitment to our community, um, you know, has been impactful and I've known you for over a decade now. And so I was just, you know, I'm, I'm thankful that, uh, that you're going to take this position with the Board of Ed because I truly know and I've seen your advocacy at work and, um, you know, um, really revolutionizing innovation, like for example, when you did the welcoming of students back. I mean, that was something that started a national trend.
Yeah.
Uh, people are doing that all over the country. Um, and so, but what I urge you is to keep innovative. That's what we need at the Board of Ed. We need innovation. We need intentional innovation, um, that's going to make a change. Because what happens when you look at systems, when you look at systems, the systems also look into you. It's just be mindful that you have to create, have that constant energy, um, in, in order to, to, to move the needle forward. But thank you again. I don't have any questions. I, you know, I, I know you well, so I know what you bring to the table. So thank you so much.
No, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much for that. And, uh, you know, one, one thing about me is that I'm committed to the city. I'm not planning to go anywhere. And what I've seen is that, uh, there are people who are professionals, professionals in the city. They come professionally and then they leave professionally. Uh, and I don't count myself as one of the, I have nothing against those, those, you know, those people, um. But, uh, in church, they say you want to be like a tree planted by the water. And I don't plan to be, to be moved. Um, I plan on being here. I plan on, as I said, raising my family here. This is someplace that I'm, I'm here. And I want to be, uh, you know, that old guy who, uh, who, who just has a weapon knowledge that's willing to share it. And I think the Board of Education is one of those spaces where if you learn it well, um, you can share that. I don't plan on being on the board that, that long. I plan on hopefully prepping someone else to take the position. We have to do more leadership development on that. So you will see me with young people at the Board of Education. You will see me with folks that, uh, if they have the energy and passion, I plan on handing this off, you know, as the mayor is looking for appointments. I plan on just having someone, a few people that are willing to go along for the ride and, and hand this off. Uh, because I, I just think that's what we need in Hartford. Uh, and I think that's where we lack is that leadership development. So this, to me, this is a leadership development opportunity to bring, um, some parents or some residents along that really want to be a part and be engaged in the process in a deeper way.
Councilman Gail.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to add my voice, uh, Pastor Johnson to the others who have, uh, congratulated you on your past efforts. You've, you've done a marvelous job of community organizing and, uh, and helping the citizens in Hartford and housing. Uh, and all the, all the work that you've done with, uh, some of the blighted properties that we had and we, we have here and, uh, you know, bringing that kind of energy with the success that you've had in the past, I'm very optimistic that you're gonna, uh, have success with the Board of Education. And to our, uh, to our Council President's, uh, point, um, I, I, I believe that the case, the situation is that, um, uh, with any, um, vacancy in elected member of the Board of Education, the other members of the Board of Education fill that vacancy. And so, uh, the three of you, Ms. Bello, um, Pastor Johnson, and Mr. Schmerling, who may not be still with us, will have the opportunity to look at the diverse, um, nature of the Hartford, uh, schoolchildren and uh, keep that in mind, uh, when you're filling that position as, uh, as I think we all hope you, uh, hope you will. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And if appointed, one thing you know about A.J. Johnson is A.J. Johnson will listen. A.J. Johnson will listen. So if there are any concerns, I would love to hear them. I can't do everything. Uh, I'm, I'm in a space in life where I'm, uh, over committing to a lot of different things, but they're all great things. Uh, they're all great things. Um, so, uh, thank you.
The Chair entertaining a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to spend all three appointments, uh, Mrs. Bedeau, uh, Pastor Johnson, and Mr. Schmerling to counsel with a favorable recommendation. And I, I want to also, uh, thank all three of you, uh, for your dedication. Uh, it's going to be a lot of work. I know it's challenging, uh, when it comes to the, uh, Board of Education and the school system here in Hartford. Um, I do appreciate everything that was said. I, I'm a true believer about neighborhood schools. At one time, remember that towns were built around churches that they still are. But now, most importantly, they're basically built around what, how, what kind of school system is, is available. And, uh, you know, and when you have a great school system that we once had, I'm not saying it's bad, but we, we definitely, um, you know, there could be some serious improvement. So I'm looking forward to working with all three of you. And, uh, and, and again, thank you, uh, for dedicating yourselves to this task.
Motion has been made, uh, favorably by Councilman. There's been the second by Councilwoman Surgeon, uh, to send these three names, Ms. Bello, uh, Pastor Johnson, Mr. Schmerling, uh, to counsel at our next meeting for a favorable recommendation. Any discussion on this? Any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, uh, say aye.
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 Any apposals, any abstentions? Seeing none, uh, the ayes have it. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, this item has been moved. Uh, excuse me, will be sent to counsel with a favorable recommendation, uh, seeing that we have no other business to discuss uh, at this time. Uh, thank you very much, uh, to our viewing and, uh, listening audience. Thank you to, uh, the mayoral appointees, Mr. I. Charles Matthews, Ms. Bello, Pastor Johnson, Mr. Schmerling, uh, for your time, uh, coming before, uh, the committee of the whole to be interviewed for your respectful positions. Um, please continue to stay safe, stay healthy, mask up, uh, wherever possible. And, uh, we will see you, uh, next time. Have a good evening. Uh, and this committee of the whole meeting is now adjourned.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Good night.